Welcome to the first 2025 meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are in the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber. Please let the record reflect that all council members are in attendance. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. We do have somebody in our audience today, Delaney Sarin, who is with the BSA Scout Troop 219 out of Oak Ridge. And we're going to ask her to come up and lead us in the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Manager, can you recognize our courier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council, or good evening. Ms. Misa Brumby is a senior at James B. Dudley High School. She is a Girl Scouts Gold Award recipient, serves as a treasurer of the Student Government Association Executive Board, and is also the Vice President of the National Honor Society. Ms. Brumby is seeking to apply her passion for health care and the underserved communities to a pre-medicine chemistry program at Howard University. After obtaining a bachelor degree, she aspires to pursue a career in medicine. Her ultimate goal is to become a pediatric cardiac surgeon. Ms. Brumby is currently participating in the Morningside Academy of the Human Rights Department. Welcome tonight, Ms. Brumby.
Please silence any and all electronic devices. If you must make or receive a phone call, kindly do so from outside the chamber. The City of Greensboro strongly encourages resident input at our meetings. It is the goal of the City Council that the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber is a welcoming and safe space for all community members. In order to speak at tonight's meeting, individuals must sign up to speak by 6:00 P.M. If you have signed up to speak online, you must let the courier know that you are in attendance. Speakers may address specific consent or business agenda items for up to three minutes. Speakers cannot relinquish their time to others, and the speaker order is determined by the providing officer. Depending on the number of speakers, council may adjust the time allocation for each person. Handouts must be given to the courier for distribution. Speakers are expected to follow the rules of decorum. Any inappropriate behavior may result in removal from the meeting. Such removal will lead to an immediate three-month suspension from in-person participation. In cases of physical altercation, suspension period extends for up to 12 months, and criminal charges may apply for those who are suspended. Virtual participation via Zoom remains an option to preserve their right to free speech. Zoom participants shall not speak until they are called upon. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest or if they serve on a board of a nonprofit receiving funding. All votes will be moved and seconded, and the presiding officer will announce the vote total. We do have a consent agenda, items G1 and G2, which are a grouping of agenda items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what is to be believed routine and non-controversial. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest or for the purpose of voting no. This meeting does include closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we may take a short recess around 7:30. At the March 18th council meeting, council passed an item G6, which is a resolution calling a public hearing for April 25, 2025, to annex the properties located at a portion of 3725 and 3739 and all of 3751 McConnell Road, 35.68 acres, Mary Bell Tuttle, Neil C. Tuttle, Charles E. Garrison, and others. Those public hearings were scheduled for the April 15th meeting of council. However, the applicant has withdrawn the request. Once the applicant decides to move forward with the items, a new resolution to call a public hearing will be presented for council consideration. No action needs to be taken this evening. Now is the time for our ceremonial and presentation items. Our first item is a resolution to honor the memory of the late Yvonne Jeffries Johnson, and I am going to move that item.
Yes, I will second.
And it is divided up between councils. So Mrs. Boozer, if you would start us off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas on December 4, 2024, the City of Greensboro in the state of North Carolina lost a beloved community leader and activist with the passing of the Honorable Mayor Pro Temperate Yvonne Jeffries Johnson, former councilperson, mayor, and mayor pro tem. Whereas native to Greensboro, Yvonne graduated from James B. Dudley High School, from Bennett College, a historically Black women's college, as a Bennett Bell, from North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University with a Masters of Science Guidance and Counseling degree. She enrolled in Howard University and received a graduate fellowship and received an honorary Doctorate of Human Letters decree from her beloved alma mater Bennett College, which is bestowed upon those that distinguish themselves through humanitarian and philanthropic contributions to society.
Whereas she experienced segregation from a young age, which ultimately shaped her future path into politics, her involvement as a civil rights activist. She participated in the famous sit-ins being incarcerated for three days following a demonstration, walked into 1963 March on Washington alongside Martin Luther King Jr. and stood in attendance at the I Have It speech. Whereas after her marriage to Walter Johnson, she moved to New York with her husband and was employed as a social worker in Orange County. Whereas the Johnsons returned to Greensboro to raise and lead all four children into public service, with three children in the educational field and one in government. Whereas following her own participation as a youngster, Yvonne became a troop leader for the Girl Scouts of America.
Whereas Yvonne dedicated approximately 30 years to Greensboro City Council, serving as a council member, mayor, and mayor pro tem, and making history as the first African-American mayor. Whereas she co-founded Barjo Incorporated with her husband and served as its president and chief executive officer, founded the Greensboro Drifters Incorporated one step further, where she served as a workshop facilitator focusing on topics of diversity and racism, and was promoted to executive director, a position she held for nearly 40 years and was founding participant of the Summit House.
Whereas making a name for herself among the community, Yvonne served on or participated in multiple boards and commissions such as the Commission on the Status of Women, the Black Child Development Institute, Goodwill Industries, the Greensboro Education and Development Council, the North Carolina Community Sentencing Association, the Greensboro Arts Council, the Greensboro Housing Coalition, the Sherri Denise Jackson Foundation, chaired the Greensboro City Council General Government Committee, was a member of the Greensboro City Council Public Safety Committee, served as a liaison for Hope Six Willow Oaks, the Greensboro Housing Development Partnership, the South Elm Lee Street Development Project, the Municipal Planning Organization Transportation Adviser Committee, and Guilford County Workforce Development. Whereas Yvonne served as the City of Greensboro representative to the North Carolina League of Municipalities and was recognized in Memoriam of the 2024 Fourth Quarter Southern City NCLM Magazine, which honors local government-elected and appointed officials who have passed away as a way of celebration to her legacy and impact on local governance and civic life.
Whereas additionally, Yvonne served on the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, the Malachi House Executive Board as the first president and the president emeritus of the Women's Resource Center Board, the Bennett College Board of Trustees, the Justice Fellowship Task Force, the Delancey Street Task Force, a rehabilitation program, facilitated Episcopal diocese racism workshops, served on the United Way of Greensboro Board of Directors, the Triad Sickle Cell Anemia Foundation, the Youth Services Bureau, the Young Women's Christian Association, the Greensboro Cerebral Palsy School, the Greensboro Child Advocacy Board, Sports Dreams Foster Friends, was a member of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, a tribal member, I don't know this one, of the Okanichi Band of Sapawnee Nation. I mean, what didn't she do? Served as the youngest national president of the National Drifters Incorporated and was the first African-American to join the Junior League. Whereas during her tenure in local government, Yvonne's passion spurred her support of key issues that included housing, transportation, and workforce development.
Whereas she launched initiatives to provide workforce skills to young people in the community, worked with people in need, supporting a food pantry that served over 4,000 people weekly, launched an initiative to reintegrate previously incarcerated people back into the community, supported the establishment of the Civil Rights Museum in Beaufort's and Greensboro's Woolworths Five and Dime, site of the Greensboro sit-ins, the Beaufort Truth and Re- and the Greensboro Truth and Reconciliation Commission that investigated the 1979 Greensboro massacre events, initiated commemorating the heroism of the Black patriots of the American Revolution by having their names monumented on a city transit bus, supported the closing of the White Street landfill, the renovation of the Morningside Homes in Willow Oaks, and initiated a historical marker being placed in LaBauer Park to recognize the first site of the YWCA in Greensboro, which became the first organization to practice integration in the 1950s.
Whereas being recognized as a phenomenal leader and servant, Yvonne received numerous awards, honors, and recognitions such as the Girl Scouts of America African-American Wing Scout Women of Distinction Award, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Curve Bar Award Ta Omega Chapter, Citizen of the Year Award, the Greensboro Commission on the Status of Women Achievement Award, Sigma Image Award, James Benson Dudley High School Education and Sports Hall of Fame Award, Bennett College Women of Substance Award, Bennett College National Alumni Achievement Award, Gandhi King Justice and the Rosetta C Baldwin Foundation Strength, Power, and Bravery Award, Gandhi King Akita Award for Peace from Morehouse University, the Greensboro Economic Development Alliance, GEDA, Stanley Frank Lifetime Achievement Award, and the Black Business Inc. Power 100 Award. Whereas as the epitome of excellence, Yvonne was also honored as the African-American Courteier African-American Women of Distinction, recognized with the International Civil Rights Center and Museum Lifetime Community Service Award, and received the highest and most distinguished honor by Governor Roy Cooper with the Order of the Longleaf Pine. Whereas on December 13, 2024, during the celebration of life for Yvonne, Mayor Nancy Vaughn proclaimed December 4 as a special recognition day for Mayor Pro Tem Yvonne Johnson in remembrance of her being sworn in as the City of Greensboro's first African-American mayor on December 4, 2007, and her death date on December 4, 2024, and to memorialize the lifetime accomplishments of the woman that served with grace and dignity, that had a balance of common sense thinking and compassion for others, and served as a trailblazer in the City of Greensboro.
Whereas the outpouring of respect paid to Yvonne and her family included dignitaries such as former Governor Roy Cooper, Congresswoman Alma Adams, Representative Gladys Robinson, Representative Katie Manning, Representative Amos Quick, Mayor Nancy Vaughn, former Mayor Robbie Perkins, and former North Carolina State Treasurer Dale Foer. Whereas to pay homage citywide, the City of Greensboro's flags were lowered to half-staff at all city facilities, and the Green Street parking deck was illuminated with pink lighting, Yvonne's favorite color. Whereas the City Transit Agency wrapped the city bus with Yvonne's photo to honor her with a Black history spotlight as an advocate for everyone to have access to opportunities and specifically the advancement of transportation. Former Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmember Yvonne J. Johnson was recognized as an African-American hero that worked through challenging circumstances and created change for the community. Whereas Yvonne was attributed as being a dedicated public servant who led with courage, passion, and a sense of justice, as the pillar of the community whose life embodied the very essence of work, earning the title of Mother of Greensboro, a beacon of hope with her passion and unwavering commitment to social justice, equity, and uplifting the community, and always serving as a role model as one of the city's staunchest champions working with countless organizations.
Whereas her legacy leaves all in the City of Greensboro remembering her words of wisdom to listen to your heart, to always do the right thing, and Yvonne's mantra that service is the rent you pay for your time on earth. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Greensboro that one, the City Council wishes to express its sense of loss and offer its condolences, sincere appreciation, and deepest gratitude to the family of the Honorable Yvonne Jeffries Johnson. Her legacy will be remembered by the outstanding contributions she made and carried in the hearts of all of those that she hugged, loved, and mentored. And two, a copy of this resolution shall be presented to the family of the late Honorable Yvonne Jeffries Johnson in recognition of her dedication and countless hours she devoted to the City of Greensboro, her community, and the state of North Carolina as a token of the City of Greensboro's deep appreciation. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. We do have the resolution that I would like to give to the family. And if you would like to make any remarks, if you could come to the podium, please.
I really didn't have anything planned to say tonight. I just wanted to say really thank all the council members for honoring my mother. She loved the city. She loved the residents of this city. And she loved to serve this city, so. And one of the things I can say that she probably would have loved the most is that her image is on one of your buses. And when her first campaign in 1993, she ran on transportation. And so I'd have to say that she would be very proud of that. But I want to remind you, please don't name a street after her. Because I don't want to have to remind you what she said. She don't want anybody driving her blank. All right. Other than that, I just want to make one slight note. She did have a huge affinity for pink, but actually her favorite color was purple.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Johnson Tonkins, and I just wanted to thank each of you for this tribute. I can just imagine that my mother is smiling down from heaven and was saying that was really too long. But we certainly thank you for your words and capturing all that my mother has tried to do for the city and for her family and friends in this declaration. So thank you.
Wait, before you leave. Item E2 is a resolution in the support of naming the I-40 Sandy Ridge Sandy Bridge Bridge after Sergeant Philip Nix. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor. I would like to also make this motion for this, and I'm sure we will get a second in a few moments.
Second.
But, Mayor Vaughn. Whereas on December 30, 2023, the City of Greensboro and the Greensboro Police Department lost an outstanding law enforcement officer, Sergeant Philip Dale Nix, in an act of violence while upholding his values as an officer of the law even when off duty. Whereas Sergeant Nix began his career as a 911 telecommunicator, learning critical crisis response and de-escalation skills, and joined the Greensboro Police Department with the 79th Police Basic Introductory Course, the PBIC Academy in 2001. Whereas Sergeant Nix served in many roles during his 22-year tenure with the GPD, including financial crimes detective, patrol corporal, patrol sergeant, police training officer, detective sergeant of the Family Victims Unit, the FVU, the team leader for the peer support team, assistant team leader of the GPD Honor Guard, member of the United States Secret Service Financial Crimes Task Force, and the United States Attorney's Identity Theft Task Force. Mayor?
Whereas Sergeant Nix served on the Elder Justice Committee, Domestic Violence High Risk Team, Family Justice Center High Risk Case Review Team, assisted with the Friends Against Fraud Program and the Vital Signs Program while in his role as the supervisor of the Family Victims Unit and the Alliance for Hope International Training Institute on Strangulation Prevention as a faculty member. Whereas Sergeant Nix was recognized as a leader through the National Family Justice Center Alliance and the Training Institute on Strangulation Prevention and was invited to present on homicide prevention and intervention as one of Guilford County's leading experts on non-fatal strangulation investigations. He was a longtime member of the Greensboro Police Officers Association. Whereas Sergeant Nix's expertise was recognized throughout the Greensboro Police Department, the community, and the nation due to his passion for serving victims of abuse. Among his many awards, Sergeant Nix received the Greensboro Merchants Association's Crime Prevention Award, the department's Superior Service Bar, and an Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. And now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Greensboro that the Greensboro City Council wishes to support the naming of the I-40 Sandy Ridge Bridge as the Sergeant Philip Dale Nix Bridge to honor his life and his commitment to our community, and that a copy be delivered to the North Carolina Department of Transportation to complete the application for the naming of the bridge in Sergeant Nix's honor. Council, please vote.
And if the family and maybe chief would like to come up and say a few words, I'll bring the resolution down.
And that passes nine to zero.
I'd just like to say on behalf of Kelly and Will and the Nix family how much we do appreciate this. The memory will always be here, 15 months, two days. But he would never believe a bridge. And he would always tell, he'd tell me, Dad, make sure they know it's Dale Nix, N-I-X. So on behalf of the Nix, N-I-X family, we sincerely appreciate the outpouring we've had from the Greensboro PD and the City of Greensboro, which he loved. He was born and raised here, and he really, really enjoyed everything about it. So thank you again.
Just like to say thank you for the recognition. I have the opportunity to travel around the state and see these honors through- Have the opportunity to travel around the state and see these honors throughout the state, and I often wonder what the story is behind the name that we honor, when they honor and recognize. And I think as folks travel, they might not know the, the story of Sergeant Nix, but I think the Greensboro community and anybody that's spent any time here in Greensboro knows the story of Sergeant Dale Nix and the sacrifice that he made, and not only him, but the sacrifice and service of his family for the Greensboro community. So, this means a lot, I know, to the family, but it also means a lot to us as a police department. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor, maybe, does anyone from the Family Justice Center wish to say anything? They're good, they're good. Thank you all. Just wanted to recognize everyone who was here today, and I saw the Family Justice Center team and several of the officers, so thank you.
We are going to push item I-3, which is a resolution recognizing the Greensboro Daily Photo Blog to our next meeting, next first meeting next month. Item E4 is a resolution to honor Thomas J. Scott, Sr., former executive director of the Hayes Taylor Memorial Young Men's Christian Association. Mrs. Hightower?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This is somewhat of a surprise for Mr. Scott, so he's not here. So, but we're going to-
Do you want to hold it until he can be here?
No, I want, because we want to do a street signage for him, and so we need to go ahead on and start that. So, and then, once he sees that come up-
Yep.
Then he'll know. Resolution honoring Mr. Thomas J. Scott, Sr., former executive director of the Hayes Taylor Memorial Young Men's Christian Association. Whereas the Hayes Taylor Memorial Young Men's Christian Association, YMCA, established in 1939, served as a cornerstone of the Greensboro community, provided invaluable programs and services that promotes youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Whereas Mr. Thomas J. Scott, Sr., dedicated nearly three decades of exemplary service to the Hayes Taylor Memorial YMCA, and served as its executive director from 1971 until retirement in 2000. Whereas, under Mr. Scott's visionary leadership, the Hayes Taylor YMCA underwent significant renovations and expansions, which included a major fundraising campaign initiated in 1985, the lead to the facility's reopening for summer camps and member activities in 1992, and his full dedication in 1995. Whereas, Mr. Scott's commitment to the YMCA's mission fostered a welcoming environment that empowered individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities to reach their fullest potential with dignity. Whereas, his tenure was marked by unwavering dedication to strengthening the community, ensuring that the Hayes Taylor YMCA remained a vital resource and gathering place in East Greensboro, for East Greensboro's residents. Whereas, Mr. Scott's legacy continues to inspire current and future leaders within the YMCA and the broader community. He exemplifies the values of caring, honesty, respect, and responsibility. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Greensboro that the Greensboro City Council hereby honors and expresses its deepest gratitude to Mr. Thomas J. Scott, Sr., for his outstanding leadership, dedication, and lasting contributions to the Hayes Taylor Memorial YMCA and the Greensboro community at large. That in recognition of Mr. Scott's significant contributions to the city of Greensboro, appropriate signage will be installed to honor his legacy, and that a copy of this resolution shall be presented to Mr. Thomas J. Scott as a token of the community's profound appreciation and esteem. And I would like to move the item.
That has been moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Dr. Wells. Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero.
I will say that the signees will be placed on the corridor of Dudley Street, which is where Hayes Taylor Y was the original, and where it was up until most recently, until it was moved to be built. But that's where he was the director, so just to make you aware of that area. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item E5 is a resolution to recognize April as the month of the young child, April 5th through 11th, 2025, and that will be read by Mrs. Thurman and Mr. Matheny. Zach, I think you're going to start off.
Well, there are over 31,000 children ages zero to five not yet in kindergarten in Guilford County, and 60% of these children live in households where their sole parent or both parents are working. Whereas, children's cognitive, physical, social, emotional, and language and literacy development are built through positive interactions with adults, peers, and their environment during these critical early years. Whereas, participation in highly, high-quality early childhood education saves taxpayer dollars, makes working families more economically secure, and prepares children to succeed in school, earn higher wages, and live healthier lives. Whereas, the city of Greensboro's 223 licensed, excuse me, 223 licensed early care and education facilities employ a wide range of education professionals.
Whereas, high-quality early childhood education depends on high-quality early childhood educators who ensure that children supported by families have the early experience they need for a strong foundation. Whereas, these high-quality educators making a lasting impact on the lives of the children and families of the city of Greensboro and deserve thanks and recognition. Whereas, the city of Greensboro recognizes and celebrates the critical investments the people, organizations, and programs committed to providing high-quality early childhood education and services to the families of our community make. And now there, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Greensboro that we hereby proclaim April 2025 as Month of the Young Child, and April 5th through 11th, 2025 as Week of the Young Child in the city of Greensboro, and commend its observance to all residents. Adopted this the first day of April, 2025. Move the item?
Moved by Mrs. Thurman, seconded by Dr. Wells. Counsel, please vote.
And we'd like to present this-
And that passes nine to zero.
Just want to share a few quick remarks. I'm Heather Adams. I have the privilege of serving as the executive director of the Guilford County Partnership for Children. So, we extend our thanks to the council for acknowledging the resolution and acknowledging Week of the Young Child, the month of April, and Month of the Young Child. As Mr. Matheny read, there are 31,550 children under the age of five not yet in kindergarten in Guilford County. We also know that 90% of a child's brain development happens in those first five years of life. 24% of those children live below the poverty line. And we also know that for families who are at the median household income in our community with a two-year-old child in full-time childcare, pay approximately 19% of their household income for the cost of childcare, which is an exorbitant amount, roughly $12,000 a year. I can speak firsthand as a parent of a UNCG student that is higher than my toddler's tuition. So, we know that many families in our community are burdened by the cost of care. There's a direct connection between having a qualified workforce who's able to work and having high-quality childcare. So, as we think about economic development in our community in particular, we really encourage everyone to think about how we will serve its children and families. So, we also invite y'all to celebrate Week of the Young Child. If you are impacted, counsel, or members, folks here are impacted by an early childhood educator, we would love to provide you with a sticker to wear on Wednesday, April 9th that says you are at work as a result of the support of an early childhood educator. There are an array of activities happening during this month, and we encourage everyone to visit our website, gilfordchildren.org. Click on our Month of the Young Child tab and join us for some of these great events. So, thank you so much, and a shout out to my colleagues. I'm joined with the Rosa Foundation and the North County, North County Association for the Education of Young Children/Gilford County Schools Representative. Thank you.
Thank you. And item E6 is a resolution recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. That will be read by Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas resilient and thriving communities are vital to our state's future health, success, and prosperity to ensure a strong foundation for everyone at all ages and stages of life. Whereas, the science is clear that resilience is built, and that communities and systems play a key role in promoting safe, secure, nurturing environments for all. Whereas, children deserve to enjoy the simple joys of childhood without experiencing the stressors of adulthood. Whereas, families are the very fabric of our community, and supporting the whole family unit makes an impact now and for generations to come. Whereas, the resilient Guilford network coordinated by the Kellin Foundation is inclusive of dozens of partner agencies working diligently to build safe, secure, and nurturing families and communities. Whereas, investing in policies, programs, and strategies that address adversity and focus on prevention, treatment, and healing are essential to the health of our community. Whereas, across the country, communities are being powered by hope, strengthened by prevention, as a reminder that stronger families create healthier communities, and that support and empowerment are the keys to making that vision a reality. Whereas, the city of Greensboro encourages individuals in all sectors, public and private, early childhood through older adulthood, faith-based organizations, healthcare systems, justice systems, social service systems, businesses, and elected leaders to collaborate to strengthen resources available to our families and communities. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Greensboro that the Greensboro City Council recognize the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and commends its observance to all citizens. Adopted this the first day of April, 2025. I would like to move that one. Madam Mayor?
Moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Mrs. Thurman. Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero.
And Madam Mayor, I see several from the Kellin Foundation in the back if they would like to come up briefly and say a few words.
Good evening. Thank you for your attention to this very important topic of child abuse prevention in the city of Greensboro. My name is Leoline Wingfield, and I have the privilege of serving as the chief program officer at the Kellin Foundation. And we at the Kellin Foundation, along with our resilient Guilford partner, network partners, are deeply committed to ensuring the safety and wellness of families across our community. One in seven children experience abuse or neglect, and for every $10 spent on child welfare, only $1.50 goes towards prevention. That means most spending goes towards reacting after abuse or neglect has already happened. When investing earlier could strengthen families and give all children the nurturing positive childhoods that they deserve. Too many families in our community don't have what they need to help children reach their full potential. The data shows that when families have access to support and services when they need them, their emotional and physical well-being improves. This year's national theme is Powered by Hope, Strengthened by Prevention, which emphasizes the importance of proactive efforts that support families, strengthen communities, and ensure all children have the right to a bright future. That is just what the Kellin Foundation at the Hope Hub is striving to do here in our community. We are working with our resilient Guilford network partners to give Greensboro children and families the support they need to be healthy and well and thrive. And we are immensely grateful to the city council for your support of this effort. These pinwheels are a national symbol as part of Pinwheels for Prevention. The pinwheel is a symbol of bright, joyful, and happy childhoods that all children deserve. We invite you to take one in honor of a child that needs your support and consider planting it in your garden, yard, or displaying it at your place of business. And thank you for standing together with us to support children across Greensboro.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the speakers of the floor portion of our meeting. You will have three minutes to speak. When I call your name, please come to the window side of the chamber. If Andrew Surgeon and Jeanette Davidson Mayer are in the room, please let the courier know. Our first speaker will be Jonah Montgomery, followed by Tom Guthrie, followed by Jenny
Good evening, city council. Good evening, residents of Greensboro. First, I want to give you thanks for allowing me to come up and speak to you, especially as your first speaker of the night. I am a public health major at UNCG. I've lived here in Greensboro for 20 years, so I have a lot of passion about the community here, especially building equity. And I wanted to talk to you tonight about a resolution opposing the Transco SSEP pipeline. So, this is an extension of a pipeline project that is slated to be going through Guilford County, which is currently gathering approval and going through government regulations right now. We would really like the city council to take a stance on this and lead the rest of the county by example. There are a lot of dangers to this pipeline. Methane is one of the most poisonous gases known as natural gas. It is undetectable, and it can explode without warning. Transco, which is the company that is planning to extend this pipeline, has one of the worst safety records for these pipeline companies. As methane is pushed through pipelines at very high pressure, it can leak into soil, air, and water and contaminate. It also poses a risk for explosions, and as it cuts through neighborhoods, near churches, schools, and community centers, citizens in Greensboro and the wider community will be at risk if this pipeline extension is approved. The Southern Environmental Law Center says that reducing methane emissions is one of the most critical near-term things that we can do to avert the catastrophic consequences of climate change. The CDC Social Vulnerability says that pipelines are concentrated in disadvantaged areas, AKA going through the path of least resistance. Historically, this path is through our disadvantaged communities, black communities, communities that do not have a power and a voice to fight back against these corporations. So, we rely on you as the city council, as our elected representatives, to take a stand and protect the climate now. We should honor Greensboro's history of diversity and equity by taking these steps to pass a resolution to oppose Transco SSEP. Mayor Vaughn, we know you have an incredible climate legacy here in Greensboro. We would love to see a movement towards more clean power, green energy, and a future for the young citizens here in Greensboro. Thank you all for listening to me, and I hope that you will ask a little bit more about the Transco SSEP pipeline. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Guthrie. I've lived here in Greensboro for 19 years, and I'm a professor at Guilford College. I'm also here to urge y'all to pass a resolution opposing- I'm also here to urge you all to pass a resolution opposing the construction of the Southeast Supply Enhancement Project Pipeline, or SSEP Pipeline. I'm going to repeat a little bit of information, but sometimes it's helpful to have a little repetition. So this is a pipeline that would carry high-pressure methane gas through Guilford County. And we've heard that the gas would be used not to generate electricity for residents but to power data centers in North Carolina. These pipelines are dangerous, and the data centers are energy and water hogs, so this project is all risk and no benefit. And it may seem like this project falls outside of your jurisdiction, but it will affect us in Greensboro. This project will only worsen the climate crisis, which will expose the residents of Greensboro to heat waves, droughts, and floods that are worse and more frequent. Pipeline projects like this are incredibly expensive, so the companies investing in them are counting on the continued extraction and burning of fossil fuels for many decades to come. We cannot afford that. We need to unite to stop the building of new fossil fuel infrastructure. This project interferes with North Carolina state law requiring Duke Energy to reduce its carbon emissions. This is also an environmental justice issue. And here, to be honest, Greensboro has some room for improvement. I'm thinking about the city's handling of Bingham Park and, in general, the very uneven distribution of environmental risk and amenities in our city. Pipeline projects like this always impact communities of color and low-income communities most. Bingham Park and other contaminated sites in the city teach us that the best way to handle environmental dangers is to not create them in the first place. In addition, the climate crisis disproportionately impacts marginalized communities. Here's a chance to stand up for the communities that surround us. Environmental dangers don't belong in our backyard or in anybody's backyard. So we need cities, counties, and states that will be impacted by this project to pressure the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to slow down this project and to require a full environmental impact statement. A resolution from the City of Greensboro would help a lot. We need you all to stand up for the people. And I encourage as many of you as possible to attend the Community Sustainability Council Meeting on April 14th if you can, where citizens will present more information about this project. Thank you.
After our next speaker, Aidan Lorenz, and then we will go to Zoom for Jason Hicks, followed by Crystal Black and Cheryl MacIver.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Jenny Zimmer. I've lived here in Greensboro for 10 years in District 4, and I'm the Executive Director of an organization called Mothers Out Front, supporting moms and caregivers who are working to ensure healthy environments for our children to live, play, and learn. I myself have two little kids. I have a five-year-old and a two-year-old. The oldest is starting kindergarten here in Greensboro this year, so it's very exciting to hear about the Month of the Young Child. When I heard about the plans for the Southeast Supply Enhancement Project, SSEP, I was immediately concerned about the impact on children here in Greensboro and across the state. The Southeast Supply Enhancement Project threatens children in our county and in our community in several ways. First, multiple schools, faith communities, and historic sites fall into the potential impact radius of this pipeline. Some call it the blast zone. This includes Oak Ridge Elementary, Oak Ridge Weekday School, Oak Ridge Military Academy, and St. James AME Church. This is a real challenge for parents sending their children to these schools. I would not want my children spending thousands of hours per year in a school in a blast zone. Second, the increased gas flow will lead to increased emissions at compressor stations 150 and 155. These are areas already overburdened with air pollution. Children's lungs are more sensitive than adults. They are still developing. This means that poor air quality exposure as a child can have lifelong health implications. Third, we know that ratepayers like myself will be subsidizing the costs of increasing gas infrastructure. And I don't need to tell you that inflation and the national consumer expense outlook is looking bleak for families here and all over the state. There is no reason that we should be committing to large new gas infrastructure, particularly, as we heard earlier, when new demand is primarily driven not by Carolinian families but by new tech and data industry. When families spend more of our income on utility bills, that's less for childcare, housing, food, and the many other expenses our families carry. Finally, like many mothers, I'm horrified that after the unprecedented climate destruction that has hit this state in the last year, that we might double down on new fossil fuel infrastructure. For our children, we cannot afford to lock ourselves into another several decades of methane use. Methane is nearly 80 times more potent a greenhouse gas as carbon dioxide, and yet we are seeing a boom in new infrastructure. New industry in this state is a great opportunity, but not if we are mortgaging our children's futures in the process. The Greensboro Community Sustainability Council has added this pipeline to its agenda for April 14th, so if any members of this council are not already planning to attend, it would be great to see you there. And of course, I hope you will pass a resolution to oppose this pipeline. I know that this council cares deeply about the kids of Greensboro and across our state, but it's on us to ensure that our actions consider them and their interests first. I must agree that the SSEP is all risks and no benefits to Greensboro's children. Thank you.
My name is Aidan Lorenz. I am a resident of Greensboro in District 4, just outside of UNCG where I graduated last year. I've chosen to stay in Greensboro because of my connection to the community, the relationships that I've made, and what I believe this city values. Mayor Vaughn, Mayor Protem Abuzouwehda, my district councillor Nancy Hoffman, and other council members, thank you for being here tonight. I deeply appreciate the fact that you take the time and energy to listen to your constituents, and I hope that you consider what I'm about to say with great weight. I'm speaking on behalf of the hundreds of Greensboro community members in opposition of the Williams Transco Proposed Southeast Supply Enhancement Project. It is a methane gas project, which is the largest East Coast pipeline project to date. Now, why should Greensboro care about this? Even though the pipeline is not coming through Greensboro District specifically, it is coming through Guilford County. It affects our Oak Ridge neighbors, and it impacts Greensboro's water and air. Water and air impacts no no boundaries. And there's one simple reason that Williams Transco has stated itself. "The benefits of the project are not realized by those who are impacted." This is a quote from the company. "The benefits of the project are not realized by those impacted." There are several safety and health concerns as well. These pipelines are known to explode without warning. In 2008, in Virginia, Transco was fined nearly $1 million when five were injured, 20 families were evacuated, and dozens of homes were damaged because of a pipeline explosion. The proposed course affects three of our headways, headway waters, which will threaten our city's three water supply reservoirs of Lake Higgins, Lake Brand, and Townsend. Transco already has 300 water quality violations in this state. Mayor Vaughn, it was announced today that you've joined the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. That's incredible. Thank you. I ask you to consider how this project would affect the goals of that challenge. You were quoted as saying sustainability and environmental stewardship are priorities for keeping the green in Greensboro. I encourage all of you to reflect on those values and to attend the Community Sustainability Council Meeting on April 14th for a more detailed presentation if you are able to. Lastly, no SSEP is no benefits and all risks. Thank you. And I would also like to take the remaining time that I have to say I urge the City Council to reconsider their relationship with the homeless population. There are so many folks here tonight that are angry on behalf of people that cannot come here and speak for themselves. So please listen to their asks with care as well. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Is Mr. Hicks on Zoom?
So good evening, Council and fellow residents. My name is Jason Hicks. I didn't get involved in local politics because I enjoy speaking at council meetings. I got involved because I was tired. Tired of seeing decisions being made about the people, but rarely with the people. Tired of policies that benefited the powerful while working people fighting for scraps. Tired of hearing promises that never make it past campaign season. When I first showed up, I still had faith. I believed local government, the power closest to the people, could be a force for good. But what I found was a system designed to protect the comfortable and punish the vulnerable, a system where white privilege and white wealth are preserved no matter the cost to Black and Brown communities. I obviously say this as a white person, because if we're going to talk about justice, we need to talk about truth. White people build the systems that create injustice. White leaders still hold the majority of power in this city, making decisions that displace, disenfranchise, and devastate Black and Brown neighborhoods. That means it's our responsibility, my responsibility, to hold each other accountable. So I'm asking the white folks, what side are you on? Because it's not enough to say we support equity, we have to truly prove it. It's not enough to post slogans and wear buttons. We have to really put some work into the game. And it's certain enough to say I'm not racist while staying silent when white politicians hoard power and resources at the expense of marginalized communities. Silence is complicity, and I refuse to be complicit. That's why I spoke out. That's why I challenged. That's why I disrupted, not because I enjoy defiance, but because I refuse to be a bystander. Because when we stay quiet, we protect the very systems we claim to oppose. When we prioritize our own comfort over confronting white supremacy, we are not allies, we are enablers. I'm attending tonight by Zoom because you all locked the door on me, because you were more offended by my outburst than by the injustice that caused it. But let me be clear, banning me from this room does not ban me from this fight. You can shut me out of this chamber, but you will not shut me up. You can mute the voices of the people with what you call rules of decorum, but it won't work. You cannot silence the righteous rage of a community that refuses to be erased. White people, this is a pivotal moment. If we truly believe in justice, we have to fight for it. If we truly believe in equity, we have to demand it. If we truly believe in liberal...
Our community has been grappling with a deep-rooted pattern of divestment that our city government has perpetuated far too long. Decades of divestment and discriminatory public policy has taken a toll on our underserved neighborhoods, making it an uphill battle to regain footing. What if we imagined a Greensboro where there were no poor communities, where there were no underserved communities? Would every neighborhood, regardless of their past, receive the investment and opportunities needed to thrive? We know the statistics. Securing a home loan is far more challenging for individuals in divested communities. Grocery store chains abandon our neighborhoods for areas deemed more desirable, leaving us with essential services. Property values and tax revenues are lopsided, favoring affluent areas, while our schools remain underfunded. Job opportunities are scarce, forcing many to seek work in distant neighborhoods, often relying on public transportation to bridge the gap. Additionally, the lack of green spaces and recreational areas further compound the challenges while white-majority neighborhoods enjoy ample resources. It is clear that Southeast Greensboro has become the new test pilot for these systematic inequities. Planning and zoning has thrown around promises that have not materialized, while we've been met with a saturation of affordable housing as the solution. This practice is one that ignores the broader needs of our communities. This moment has been a wake-up call for us, as we are here to demand for change. We will not allow you to consider conditions in some zoning cases and refuse in others without being held accountable. We're aware of an upcoming case, and I am here to remind all council that you are to consider land use only. We also will not turn a blind eye to the blighted properties that sit and decay in our neighborhoods. We expect accountability from our city officials and city staff and ask you to hold these property owners accountable. Clean it up or condemn it. We appreciate the efforts of the individuals like ACM Harrell, Larry Roberts, and Kristy Holt, who have advocated for our concerns through code enforcement and hope that the recommendations for a commercial code ordinance will be embraced by council. We stand in solidarity, not only for our community, but also for those who have historically been impacted by divestment and past discriminations. We advocate for reconciliation and a future where the truth about our communities isn't framed by fear but is celebrated for the strength, creativity, and historical significance we possess. We believe the more significant investment in divested communities is integral to improving physical health and the prosperity of Greensboro. Thank you. After our next speaker, Andrew Surgeon, Jeanette Davidson-Mayer, and Tyler Monroe. If you would come to the window side of the room.
Good evening, Council. I can't follow Crystal. I think she dropped the mic. I think everything that she said, you guys are aware. I think it was put forth in a manner that can be very receptive. I will say, from the environmental impact that we have in divestment, there are certain origins of cancer, right? Some of it's genetics, but some of it is also environmental, right? So if you are surrounded by industry, all the concrete, the air pollution, if you have toxins going into your water, all of those things cause cancer. Every day, we are seeing people with stage III, stage IV cancer. They're getting younger and younger and younger. While we work to create testing that screens for cancer, right now, we have to do what we have to do to protect all of Greensboro, right? Not just one portion of Greensboro, but all of Greensboro. And so I heard the comments on my way in about the pipeline. Those things you guys got to take into consideration. There was a news story about a data center, and the people that were surrounded by the data center, water pressure was almost nonexistent. They had no fight, they had no one to help them because they were out in the county, country, had many acres, but the data centers were taking all of the resources. So I advise you guys to think intricately about these things that are coming with developers. Use experts that know what they're talking about in those fields to protect your community. Thank you.
Can you help raise that a little bit for him?
Yeah, we had a little... All right, hi, my name is Jaredon. I'm on Spur Road in Greensboro, and my great-grandparents were sharecroppers. 150 years before that, they were farmers on plantations not a full mile from here. The mills that built this city into a regional powerhouse were filled with cotton picked and sowed by my ancestors' hands on my ancestors' fields. So my words to this council are not only well-advised, but they are well-earned. More to it, my phone calls, my emails, my DMs are long overdue. I know y'all have them. I'm here because I take pride in being the person my friends trust in their time of need, but I feel ashamed that on too many occasions, when I urged justice, the only response they received was stereotyping and rejection from a system ill-equipped to help them. No investigation, just bigotry. The accused rapists weren't even interviewed. A simple unofficial action that study after study proves significantly deters crimes, even absent an arrest. But they feel invincible. But they feel invincible, untouchable, because time after time, we've proven to them that they are. I know some of these attackers by name. Some of them are brothers, fathers, bosses, but they might as well be a world away. Now I know what you're thinking, Jaredon, we don't have the power, we're only city council, I've heard that one before. Well, I thought of that. The measures I'm proposing, they're viable, actionable, and proven. You may say, we need to listen to the stakeholders and let them do their jobs. Well, I thought of that. I've spoken with the institutions and public safety leaders of Greensboro and Guilford County, at least the ones who will listen. They have some notes for you. You may say, we don't have the time, we need to focus on the issues that matter, and I thought of that. Across phone calls, online posts, and networking, over 100 people have told me the same thing, that this is well overdue. So if after all that, you're still sitting there unsure of what role you should play in this, if you're willing to fight to pass this simple sexual assault survivors bill of rights, well, I thought of that too. Quit. Let someone with the energy and drive take the opportunity. Because not only is this bill obvious and necessary from any perspective, but it is the first policing-informed framework in decades that could put us a generation ahead in public safety. The only question is, are you going to act, or are you going to be another reason why survivors are left without justice? And I've got 30 more seconds, so I'll tell y'all a story, one of the wider ones, a bit more safe for work. A friend of mine was groped by a police, by a bus driver on a GTA bus, and it was on footage, and they caught it, and she immediately complained to the nearest police officer. He pulled up the footage, saw that she had smiled at him a moment before, and threatened to arrest her for false reporting if she continued with her report.
Hello, my name is Tyler Monroe. I'm here in solidarity with the Greensboro Working Class and Houseless Organizing Alliance, as well as Guilford for All, and the Universalist Unitarian Church. I would also like to add as a brief tangent, I would like to act in solidarity as well with the people speaking out against the Transco Pipeline and the other speakers tonight who are doing the incredible work of trying to protect our marginalized communities. The three aforementioned organizations helped organize a community meal, March 23rd, Sunday, and I would like to give voice to my disturbance of the police presence at this event, and my general frustration with actions continually taken by the city against the unhoused community. When it reached out to, by email, to join, the city council responded with only a police presence and an urgent message that says there are other means to organize events like these, wherein previous organizations have been successful. In my opinion, I see Woe as successful every weekend when they distribute food and clothes effectively to the unhoused population in this area amidst the neglect of some of our officials. Throughout my time in Greensboro, the city has continually pushed ordinances against the unhoused, such as anti-distribution, anti-loitering legislation, crippling the funding for the IRC, destruction of housing in Gledwood with no promises of alternatives for repair or construction of new properties, and the arrest of people who have simply nowhere else to go. Cameras at the IRC, sounds, signs downtown, and the increase in police presence are all indicative to me of access to funding and resources that could be better allocated towards support for the unhoused, rather than threatening these people who are already threatened so much by the society around them. I would like to take some of our remaining time to remind us that the houseless people are people first, and of course, citizens and a part of our community. They have rights, voices, and needs that need to be respected and met. I would like to demand some things from the city council, such as protections for access to public spaces, access to bathrooms, and portable drinking water for these people who wouldn't have it otherwise. The protection of personal property and encampments. I've seen some arguments that littering would be an issue, you know, for some of these distributions or the private property of these people, but you do not see that same argument extended to businesses such as lawn service, or Parkside, or any other restaurant that allows people to take food to go. This is obviously a targeted argument. I would also ask for further protections for tenants. I know some other people have come up here and spoke about issues with heating and other things like this, so that those people can, the people who are housed can stay housed, and we can keep defending their rights. With the last bit of time I have, I'd like to mention that this is my first time speaking, but hopefully not my last, and I would encourage other people to exercise your voice as much as you can. As Audre Lorde tells us, "Your silence will not protect you."
After our next speaker, Billy Belcher, Keith Brown, and Carol Webb, if you would come to the window side of the room.
If we want to start out with that one, and then that one, that one. Everything I had said was just a lot of information for them.
Okay. Why I have to go out?
I understand. Is there a button I push to advance it?
Okay. 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 Yeah.
Good evening. It is an honor to be here tonight, speaking before the city council on such a passionate topic that I have. The Hidden Heroes Community Program is part of the Elizabeth Dole Foundation's Hidden Heroes Campaign, launched in 2016 by Senator Elizabeth Dole, Hidden Hero Campaign Chair Tom Hanks, and over nearly 200 military and veteran caregivers representing virtually every state, and I am included in that. North Carolina became a Hidden Heroes State in 2022, signed by Governor Roy Cooper. Here's a quote by Senator Elizabeth Dole. "I have dedicated my life to the cause because I have seen firsthand the tremendous impact our nation's 14.3 million military caregivers make in the lives of our veterans, each and every day in the neighborhoods, big and small. Their needs are overwhelming, and as a country, we must come together to find helpful ways to support them in their lifelong journey of care. In the fall of 2005, little did I realize, at the age of 33, that I was going to become a caregiver to my then-husband, who has suffered five concussive accidents while in Iraq. There was little known about blast injuries associated with traumatic brain injuries back then. Here I am, nineteen years later, and now having to continually grieve the loss of my husband. Some consider this an ambiguous style of grief because of the long-term side effects of war. My veteran has early onset frontotemporal dementia. I am his dementia trigger, which means I am the one that he physically and verbally abuses. To support his quality of life, we moved him into my sister and brother-in-law's home, which was very crucial. I am now a part-time, in-person caregiver, and a full-time, behind-the-scenes caregiver to my now sadly ex-husband. In 2016, I joined the Class of 2016 Two-Year Fellowship Program with the Elizabeth Dole Foundation, and continue to move on with supporting our military and veteran caregivers. Tonight, my ask is for the city of Greensboro to consider becoming a Hidden Heroes City, and to have somebody represent it, represent the city at the Hidden Heroes Rise Summit being held here in Greensboro on April 12th." Let's see, I have that flyer, oh. How do I get to the flyer? I'm sorry, thank you.
Let me get you out.
Oh, yeah, that one works too. There's lots of them. Here's the entertainment for that night. But I had also sent in the flyer for the summit that day, and I have all sorts of information if you guys have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Billy from Woe, Working Class and Houseless Organizing Alliance. Pleasure to see y'all again. As you know, Woe has been distributing mutual aid to the homeless in Greensboro for several years, and I am here tonight because I almost got arrested for it a couple of Sundays ago. We had a meal at Center City Park. All of you were invited, but it was the police that you sent to represent the city. And what used to be a routine weekend for me has become an act of civil disobedience. Now, to me, that was no surprise, because I have seen for several years what your response has been to our growing housing crisis, and an important part of that response has been to criminalize the people most affected by it. Property rights matter here, and human rights do not matter here. We have seen ordinances attacking homeless people's speech rights, attacking their camps and their belongings, and when you add it up, it becomes an attack on their right to exist. It is. And right now, human rights are under attack all over this country in almost every walk of life. You're a criminal if you are born in the wrong place. You're a criminal if you oppose genocide. You're a criminal if you want reproductive health care, and you're a criminal if you can no longer afford a home. I know the Trump administration gets a lot of media, but your administration is just as guilty. It is time to support human rights, and you can begin, please, by protecting the people who have literally nowhere to go. With a homeless bill of rights, to protect access to our parks and our sidewalks and public spaces, instead of denying them that access. To protect people's tents and bags and personal property. To protect an encampment space. To guarantee 24-hour access to bathrooms and drinking water. To provide free medical clinics and fund a tenants' rights task force and keep people housed in the first place. There is darkness in this world, and we all know it is getting darker. And if you do not stand for these rights, for human rights now, if we do not protect the poor and oppressed today, tomorrow is going to be too late. So are you going to protect people? And if you are not, if they are not, what about you? Are you going to protect people? You, and you, and you. Because it has to be done. ICE kidnaps people off the street, and you don't know what the thing is tomorrow that they're coming to snatch people for. If you want to stop it, we have to band together now.
Good evening. My name is Keith Brown. I'm a volunteer with GSO Woe, Greensboro Working Class and Houseless Organizing Alliance, and I'm also a first-year student at UNCG. I'm here today to express my support for the rights of the houseless in our community, so I'm going to be echoing a lot of points of my comrade Billy. When I moved to Greensboro in August, I had thought I would be leaving behind the social ailments and lack of institutional support that plagued my rural hometown. I had hoped that I would be coming to a place that was a little more enlightened in regards to these kind of things, a place that had the funding and the political will to support and uplift the most vulnerable in our society. Instead, what I found was actually worse than the apathy of the countryside, a city government hell-bent on making the lives of those struggling even harder and waging a war against the houses. Right after I began volunteering with Woe, the Interactive Resource Center, Greensboro is then only 24-hour shelter, had their hours of operations forcibly cut, jeopardizing the lives of countless people being exposed to the elements in winter. Then in December, you passed a myriad of laws designed only to criminalize the status of houseless. You passed laws banning us from food distribution and publicly owned spaces, and you passed anti-camping laws to really drive to the point that people in Greensboro have nowhere to go. You made it illegal to lay down on the sidewalk. Do you, do you people understand how destitute and low-down you have to be to just lay down on the sidewalk and try to sleep? For these reasons, I could only come to one conclusion after my short time living here, that the city of Greensboro is determined to determine our houseless population into a criminal population. I thought about coming up here today and trying to morally admonish you. I considered appealing to your sense of humanity and discussing my own experience as a homeless youth, and how 90% of these people are just like you and I, and are in their circumstance due to no fault of their own. But I don't believe that would work to achieve my goals, because I think that you are a spineless and despicable group of career politicians who have no intentions to help those who need it. I believe that this city's war- I believe that this city's war against the homeless is just another example of the century-spanning tactic our nation has used to turn the poor into prisoners, and then turn the prisoners into slaves. It will never be a crime for the houseless to seek basic humanity and survival, no matter how many sham laws you pass to the contrary. Thank you, and free Palestine.
Before the next speaker, Anthony Slaughter, Scott Jones, and Scott Ravel, if he would come to the window side of the room.
Honored Council members, thank you for letting me speak with you today. My name is Carol Webb, I'm a resident of Guilford County, a physician, and a mother. I'm here to ask that you remove the new rule that outlaw sharing food in the parks. Sixty years ago, the law said that blacks couldn't eat with whites at Woolworth's. Every American school child knows how wrong that rule was. It protected the comfort of some by outlawing the presence of others. Last Sunday, I took my daughter to Center City Park after church for a picnic, and police were called, not to stop me from sharing food with my white daughter, they were there to stop kind people from serving lunch to poor, unhoused, brown and black folks, steps away from Woolworth's. Men with guns enforced your rule and would not let them have lunch with me. I heard this new rule was passed because there was too much trash in the park, so I brought a box of garbage bags with me, ready to help pick up the litter, but there was no litter to be found, and then I realized the city is concerned about a different kind of trash. This is also the site of the Greensboro massacre in 1979. We know what happens when law enforcement is told that certain people are subhuman. This issue is personal for me. I got very sick a few years ago, and I couldn't work for a year, and I'll tell you what, I realized how close I am to the street. I was lucky, I recovered, because my community took care of me when I couldn't care for myself. Someone can become homeless in an instant. North Carolinians have lost homes in tornadoes, fires, hurricanes, but no matter how it happens, they're still human. They shiver, their stomachs ache, they suffer, just like we do, more than we do, safe in our homes. All of the world's religions say to be kind, to love your neighbor as yourself. My religion believes in the worth and dignity of every human being. At my church, children make gifts for the homeless, care bags with hygiene items, snacks, and words of encouragement. We also do a reverse offering. The church gives us money to give away to folks in need. This giving mindset is key to our faith. Pope Francis said, "Pray for the hungry and then feed them," that is how prayer works. We are at a crossroads in history. This rule, it is the wrong move. It was embarrassing to explain what happened to my daughter. She said, "I thought they don't make rules like that anymore." Please don't take us backwards. Please don't outlaw kindness. It may be you who needs it next. Thank you, and God bless you.
I'm here today in solidarity with Woe, and I'm speaking out against your mistreatment of the homeless people here in Greensboro. I have many friends here who are homeless, and I have watched them slowly disappear because of the laws and acts you have put into place, and with their permission, I've written a poem that I will read to you today. "I am a homeless man, but everyone focuses on the former half of my title, not the latter. Look at me, my flesh is rotting off the bone, my legs are crippled, I am desperate, I am sweaty, I am dirty, and I reek. I am rotting in the summer streets, and I can't find the help I seek. I pray for the turn of each season's change, I beg for the coming of fall, for if it does not come soon, I will drown in a puddle of my own sweat. But now the colorful leaves are gone, and I could not see their beauty, for I was blinded by mace and the bruises from batons in my face. The trees are as naked as I, and the wind is cold, my teeth chatter, but I have nothing to chew. I am frozen solid, and I slip and shatter like glass. The street sweepers pick up my pieces and they throw me away, like the garbage that you think I am. I am the streets of the city you stomp upon, I am the voice you crush out. I am here then, now, and always. I am." I am." I would like to say I'm glad that the police officers are here today, instead of on the street trying to arrest homeless people and those trying to help them. And I'm glad the council members are here today, instead of in their office writing more and more documents to try and get rid of the homeless. The years I have been here, I have seen the homeless problem grow more and more, and I have seen you act less and less. You are trying to arrest these people because the only roof you are willing to put over their head is a jail cell. I have seen you take these people away because the only thing you are willing to feed them is the gruel that they are fed in prison. You do not care about the people of this city. You care about profit. That's why you invest in things like the Tanger Center and entertainment. You want to promote tourism and not help the people that live here. All you care about is the profit, is the money. I don't know how you sleep at night, because if I had the weight of my actions on my shoulders, my soul would quiver. But I'm not sure you can feel that shame. I'm not sure you resonate with any of the people sitting in this courtroom today. Sometimes I think the only thing that you feel is the weight of your wallet and not the weight of your actions. Thank you.
Good evening, city council and Greensboro residents. I'm Scott Jones, the deputy director of tiny house community development. For over 13 years now, I've been working with the homeless population here in Greensboro on many days during the week. I'm talking six days a week. I am on my 11th day straight working to provide housing for the homeless here in Greensboro on PowerPoint. I was literally grading on Sunday a community so that it could be seeded and that work could continue on the houses. That was my seven-day straight. Now I'm at 11 days. To say I don't care about the homeless population, I dare anyone to say that I don't. We have a Hope Center here in Greensboro that needs the city council's support. You have been provided a letter that will be given out to all the business owners in Greensboro, up and down Elm Street, because we have been trying our best at the Hope Center to provide service for the businesses, the residents, this council, and especially for our friends experiencing homelessness in Greensboro. The Hope Center's been open six days a week for over two years. Six days a week over two years. We are the second-highest organization in Guilford County who does assessments for individuals experiencing homelessness to get them on the by-name list so that they can work toward housing. We are the second-highest agency in Guilford County who are doing assessments for the COC. We are the only agency that's funded through the state to provide street outreach, which we and I myself have visited over a dozen encampments over the last two weeks that are hidden, that most people don't even know exist. We encourage our clients to use our dumpster, our porta-john, to use our restroom inside to be able to sleep if they need to in front of our building, just a space for them to come, just a place, just a space, that they don't have to worry about being arrested or charged or anything else, or getting in someone's way or their doorway on Elm Street. We are trying to provide a service for the city, those business owners, and we need the city's financial support to keep the doors open and to go to 12 hours a day, seven days a week minimum. We need the council's support. Ms. Harold, Mr. Davis have been working great conversations. Mr. Holston, Matheny, thank you for taking the time, working with me, talking with me. The Hope Center needs your support. If it doesn't get your support, it will be closed in a few days, and that means over 35 individuals will not have a place to go during the day to get a hot breakfast in the morning when they miss urban ministries. Please, thank you. Happy to be here.
And I said Scott Rabel, but I believe it's Kevin Rabel, if Kevin is here. Kat Kaboulis, Jada Lee, and Malik Hugh, if you would come to the window side of the room.
Hello, my name is Kevin, not Scott Rabel. I'm not here tonight to criticize the law that you've passed banning food distributions in public parks in downtown Greensboro. It is an unjust law that only exists to make it harder for vulnerable people to access vital resources, and it's an embarrassment to the city that it was ever passed, but that's not what I'm here to say. I'm here tonight to affirm the truth that's understood by the members of your community that have continued to provide these essential services in the face of your attempts to criminalize their behavior. And that truth is that no matter what laws you pass to try to stop us, we will never stop taking care of our neighbors. And in fact, the more you try to stop us, the harder we'll push back. The public meal on March 23 represents a growing coalition of individuals and organizations in this city that are outraged by the way that city council has demonstrated a pattern of trying to push unhoused people further and further to the fringes of society. And we refuse to sit by and allow the criminalization and dehumanization of our vulnerable neighbors. They came together to provide not just a hot meal, but to provide haircuts, essential health and hygiene supplies, and possibly most importantly, a sense of community between people of different racial, gender, religious, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And that sense of community is so important because it illuminates that all of our struggles are connected, and no matter what forces try to divide us, we are always at our strongest when we stand together. And it's become apparent that, at least on the issue of housing, lawmakers in Greensboro are intent on creating a divide between the haves and have-nots. But we will not be fooled, and we will continue to take care of our neighbors, because our community is only safe when it's safe for everyone. And if the city won't keep us safe, then we will always, always, always step up and keep ourselves safe. Also, while I still have time, I just want to express support and solidarity with the other groups that are here. There is no housing justice without environmental justice or racial justice, and their struggles are intimately linked with ours as we work together to make Greensboro safe for everyone.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kat. With me tonight are several members of my team at CSWEI. That means we work directly with our community by partnering with the IRC, Weaver House, Family Services of Piedmont, GC Stop, and the Family Success Union, just to name a few. I want to start by thanking you for your continued support. Since I've started working with the unhoused community, housing has been the most requested resource, and followed by that is employment. 20% of our population requested assistance with employment, which can look like creating a resume, finding job openings, or connecting them with an employment program. Even if we connect people with employment, we still hit that barrier of affordable housing. I work with so many people who either get a check due to disability or they work, and they're still unable to find housing because there's extremely few options in Greensboro. It is few and far in between that I can find a one-bedroom apartment under $850 a month, and I thoroughly believe that housing is a human right. I would like to invite you to think about safe and affordable housing as a funding priority for those who are working and doing all that they can to find a safe place to live. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jada, and just like Kat, I am a part of the CSWEI team where we are partnered with the IRC. I do just want to echo a lot of what Kat said. As I stand here in my privilege and my clean clothes that I drove in, in the car that I am afforded, in the home that I live in with heating, water, and access to everything that I need, not everybody has that same privilege. Working at the IRC, I have seen firsthand what it looks like to be unhoused. There, your rights are stripped away. Your humanity is stripped away, and you are not afforded the privilege of dignity and patience. I appreciate everything that you all do when it comes to funding for the unhoused population, but more can be done. There is a huge dire need for housing opportunities, housing resources, and support for our unhoused friends. I see the firsthand consequences of being unhoused when housing is an innate human right that we all deserve. And I'm sure that all of you sitting up there get to go home to a warm bed, to a washing machine, to warm cooked food, and to empathy and understanding from the people around you based off of your titles, based off of what you do for work, based off of how you look and how you dress. Not everybody is afforded that same opportunity, and it is truly a privilege to stand here among you all and speak a little on behalf of our unhoused friends who are suffering greatly. And I'm sure you have seen it, as the parks are usually flooded and the sidewalks are flooded, where our unhoused friends are criminalized for simply being unhoused. This is not something that they can help, although I'm sure a lot of people may think that this is a personal failure on their part, but it is a systemic challenge. It is an institutional challenge that can only be fixed through empathy, through care, and through kindness for everyone else. Hopefully, you guys heard the message, and I really appreciate everything that y'all do, and I hope that you take in a little consideration when you drive your nice cars to your nice homes and your warm beds. Thank you.
After our next speaker, we have Rhea D., Deana Hayes-Greens, and Megan Hayes-Bell.
Hello, city council. I'm back again. Before I get started on the PowerPoint, I got my business plans put out. Beauty in the Streets is brought to you by me. I have founded this this year, January of this year, the 3rd of January, and I started this program for my unsheltered community, just like everybody else that come out there and feed out in the parks, feed downtown. I have a lot of questions that's going to be answered on this, because my community needs a lot of services, just like in California, in Skid Row, there's a whole lot of stuff that's going to go through, but I'm trying to push that to North Carolina, and I'm brought to you by me. So, like I showed you on this one, I did the same thing. I fed my homeless. I passed out plenty of plates, plenty of food to them, even their McDonald's. Even y'all could see it in the video. Y'all could see it in the video right there on the screen that I did, what I did is passing out, me passing out the food to people, passing out and handing them the food. I added this to the video. I added this so that way people could see me out here working, showing the homeless some food, me passing out a lot of food.
Fun, man. What you doing? Leaving biscuits and orange juice.
So I wanted y'all to get a chance to see me doing work that I had done.
How you doing? God bless you.
Trey Davis, I know you get a chance to see this. This is me behind the scenes. All them biscuits, all them orange juices that I brought out there was for my homeless community. I went in my own money. God woke me up one day and just told me, "Go out there and feed the unsheltered community. Feed them with your love. Show them what you can." And like I said, I brought this back up again. There's a whole lot of plans. Yes, we are asking. I'm asking if y'all could help me sponsor so that where I can get my Beauty in the Streets off the ground, so I can get a kitchen, so I can get vans, so I can have a meeting with y'all and have it face-to-face with my homeless community. And we want to show so much love, but we need y'all help to help me non-proper and push this nonprofit that I had brought up the last time. The same plan that I brought up, I'm bringing it up again because I'm gonna keep bringing up every city council that Beauty in the Streets is coming to Greensboro, and this year is gonna be there, and I want to bring it in before Nancy Vaughn leave this office. I want to bring it in before she leave office. Trey Davis, can you please make sure you get back to me as soon as you can on some reports, statistics on all of the homeless members? Please, I'm asking. Nancy Vaughn, remember the other day when I sent you downtown at the depot? Remember I asked you about asking the questions? I know y'all probably got a lot of questions on me about Beauty in the Streets. It came up to me because I brought this out here. I brought this for them, a plan. So if y'all got any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Hello, my name's Rhea. It seems to me that there's a very small group of wealthy people who don't want to see a certain type of person in the downtown streets of Greensboro, and that is very disturbing to me. It was very disturbing to see signs downtown at Center City Park and at LeBauer Park saying that you could not distribute meals or resources to people, because it seems to be only certain kind of people that aren't allowed to receive meals or receive resources, because the ordinance that has been passed is not used against somebody who's having a pizza party in the park or taking a meal out of their picnic basket. It's only against people who are trying to serve food to our houseless neighbors. So what you've done here is you've made the other, which is not okay in any circumstances. So I think that this ordinance should go away. It should be allowed and encouraged to distribute meals and resources to people who need it. I also think that this is not as complicated an issue as people make it out to be. If you don't want to see houseless peoples in the street, house them. It's very, very simple. I would also like you to revisit your resolution on peace in Israel and Palestine. As we know, Israel has blocked all resources from going into Gaza again at the beginning of March. They're not getting any aid at all. This is not a two-sided issue. All of these issues work together. Our tax dollars that should be being used on housing the homeless, on universal health care, on reproductive health, it's being sent to bomb brown and black people all over the world. So all of these things are interconnected. I would really love to see Greensboro take a stance to help all people and not pick and choose who we're gonna help and who we're gonna distribute resources to. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and council members. Eleven years ago, several civic organizations alongside the city of Greensboro gathered at the Clarion Hotel for a day-long conference to unveil the Piedmont Together Plan. Many of you were there, Mayor Vaughn, Councilman Matheny, and others. Some of you even sat on panels. That day, a clear message was delivered from the stage. If you're not going to deal with race, don't waste our time. One council member walked past those presenters in the row that I was seated on and said, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I've heard it all before." And that's exactly the problem. The report titled "The Equitable Growth Profile of the Piedmont Triad" lays it out in black and white. The report said that our region has historically excluded marginalized voices from planning processes. The report said that deep, meaningful engagement is essential to build trust and to steer development toward equitable outcomes. The report warned that inclusion would remain a buzzword and not a practice without specific strategies and shared narratives. The report made clear that communities of color are driving this region's growth and that by 2040, Guilford County would become a majority of people of color community. In reality, that day came so much sooner, within years. We were also told this. If racial income gaps were closed, the Piedmont Triad's gross domestic product would have been $9.5 billion higher in 2012. That was a decade ago, over a decade ago. You had the data, you had the projections, you had the report, you had the truth, and still you've done nothing. Most of you don't remember the report. Some of you never read it and certainly haven't shared it, but none of you seem to be using it to guide policy today. You tell us change doesn't happen overnight, but here in Greensboro, it seems that change doesn't happen in 10 years, it doesn't happen in 20 years, sometimes not in 30, and that's unacceptable. What we needed, and what we still need today, is intentional, strategic, equity-driven leadership, and what we got and what we continue to get is a shrug. Let me remind you that this city's demographics, we are not a problem to manage. We are the key to this city's prosperity, but only if it's led with honesty, courage, and the willingness to confront uncomfortable... but only if it's led with honesty, courage, and the willingness to confront uncomfortable truths. So I'll close with this. You can no longer say that you didn't know. The question now is what are you finally willing to do? Thank you.
After, after our next speaker, I have Monica Walker, and she is the last speaker. I have signed up. If we've missed you, please see the courier in the back corner of the room.
Good evening, council members. My name is Megan Hayes-Bell, and I'm a resident of Greensboro. Last month, several new, several neighborhood and homeowner association members stood here and spoke openly about the decades of neglect our communities have experienced. This neglect has created conditions that are so unstable that positive retail, like quality grocery stores and commercial businesses, won't consider coming to us. What we said was clear, but what we got in return was silence. There was no meaningful response from this council, nor the city manager. Instead, we were told how hard it is to attract grocery stores to food deserts, as if we don't already know that. It was suggested that we start a petition. Let me be clear, we are not asking you to drop a grocery store in our neighborhoods tomorrow. We are asking you to understand why it's not possible for one to thrive right now. What we need is not charity. We need investment in conditions that, that create sustainability. We need diverse, mixed-income housing. We do not need to be the continued dumping ground for low and affordable housing projects that only concentrates poverty and increases instability. We need coordinated leadership and a transparent system. Right now, your housing infrastructure is either disorganized or it's invisible. The people appointed to GHDP and the Redevelopment Commission, they lack a clear vision, they lack measurable goals, and they lack accountability. These boards are making choices that perpetuate the very problems that we are trying to solve. So here's some advice. First, establish a well-coordinated and transparent network of housing departments, boards, and commissions that will work with community stakeholders, not above them. Second, develop clear inclusive criteria for board and committee membership that reflects a shared vision, created with us, not for us, to drive equitable housing policies. Third, and most importantly, all future development plans must center around de-concentrating poverty without displacement and gentrification. That means creating mixed-income housing, diversifying the housing inventory, and ensuring that every community has access to a full spectrum of housing. That includes affordable, market-rate, and high-end properties. We want communities where families can stay, grow, and thrive, not just survive. If you're serious about revitalization, then show us. Build the infrastructure that makes equitable growth possible. Until then, we're not just asking for better, we're demanding it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn, council members, and city and staff. My name is Monica Walker, and I live at 608 Martin Street. I was present at the last meeting of the city council where members of my community, the Unified Neighborhood Council of Southeast Greensboro, did everything in our power to convey the deeply rooted conditions hindering the redevelopment of our neighborhood. I left that meeting troubled, not only by what was said, but what was clearly not heard. Let me be clear, we're not asking for a grocery store. If that's what you walked away with, then the essence of our message was missed entirely. What we are demanding is that you as elected officials fulfill your responsibility to address and correct the historic systemic disinvestment that has plagued this community far too long. The absence of a grocery store is a symptom, not the disease. And if the disease were fully understood, it would demand a far greater commitment to real transformative redevelopment. We need serious investment, not charity, not containment, not low-budget placeholders. We need high-quality retail services that can spark economic growth. But first, the city must repair the damage caused by decades of neglect, damage that left this area unattractive to qualified developers. We've had conversations with developers. Too many offer second-rate solutions, plans that benefit them more than the people who live here. They seek quick wins and not lasting change. Our community deserves more than performative gestures and temporary programming. We are not a testing ground for trendy experiments. We are a community demanding dignity and equity. This is about more than buildings. It's about justice. It's about creating a future that honors those who stayed, who struggled, and who still believe in the promise of this place. We support development that reflects that belief. The South Elm Development Group, under a 12-year agreement with the city, offers the strongest opportunity to spark meaningful change. Among them, the Alexander Group stands out with a forward-thinking plan. Their proposal includes market-rate housing designed to welcome new energy without displacing the longtime residents who have held this neighborhood together. Importantly, their plan also includes dedicated space for a grocery store, ones we've created the conditions to sustain one. That's real planning. That's long-term vision. In contrast, we don't need another so-called changemaker space. These are often little more than symbolic gestures, spaces that come and go, while our community is left behind. We need real investment. We need development without displacement and growth that uplifts, not uproots. Thank you.
And that is our, that is our final speaker from the floor. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to move the consent agenda? Moved by Dr. Wells, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. Council, please vote. That passes nine to zero. Now we move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Item H1 is a resolution to close a portion of Sargent Street Philip Marsh for Gym Space LLC. We do not have any speakers against this item. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, council members. Again, this is a request to close a portion of Sargent Street, which is located at the intersection of East Washington Street and extends approximately 284 feet to its terminus. This is a request that came from owners of properties adjacent to this street and did cover at least 50% of the area that is covered by the street. The remaining property owner, which is north and southern, was also notified about the hearing this evening as required by state law. This request is based to facilitate redevelopment of a property that was recently rezoned to central business back in January. So this is to help that facilitation along in making this determination to close the street. The city must find that closing this would not be contrary to the public interest and that no property owner would be deprived, excuse me, of reasonable means of ingress or egress. Towards that end, a second condition was worked out as part of the conversations with our technical review committee. As you can see, the review committee did recommend approval of the street closing with these two conditions, Planning and Zoning Commission then also recommended approval of the zoning, excuse me, the street closing change. So there were no speakers in opposition to that street closing request at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. I can answer any questions for council.
Any questions for Mr. Kirkman? Mr. Marsh, would you like to speak?
I just have a quick question. I was trying to figure out how we're getting the MLK.
Oops.
How you?
There's gonna be an easement that's dedicated. That's what's gonna happen.
Is that where traffic is gonna be?
Yeah, that was that second condition, was to make sure that they get down there for maintenance purposes for the railroad.
Oh, just for maintenance, not for traffic?
Not for traffic, no. It's really more for maintenance access so that the railroad can continue to operate through that area.
There was a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Okay, that is moved by Mr. Matheny, seconded by Mrs. Hoffman. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. We will now move on to the general business portion of our agenda. Item I1 is a resolution authorizing master lease agreement with Ontario Investments, Inc. for the purpose of technology equipment leasing. Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Dr. Wells. And that passes nine to zero. Item I2 is a resolution approving extension and funds for contract 2019-5274 with Delarock, Inc. Moved by Mrs. Hoffman, seconded by Mayor Protem.
I think I have a question, or maybe it's on the next item. Is the, is the next item, Mr. Mason, for the Crossmax, or is it this? It's the next one? Okay.
Council, please vote. That passes nine to zero. And our last item of the evening is I point three, an ordinance establishing federal fiscal year 2024 FTA CMAC operating assistance grant.
I'd like to move the item, but I would like to hear from Mr. Mason because I think this item is really important because I, I think people really need to understand what transit is doing to move people to better economic conditions.
Mr. Mason?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and City Manager. This item is for us to continue running the Crossmax Purple. As we've seen over the year, since we put this Crossmax in operation, we've seen our services jump on that particular route, just Crossmax, over 35%. And when you add Route 1 and Route 10, it's over 65% ridership increase on that particular route. So the Crossmax Purple is very important for us getting folks from east to west, and we're looking forward to a north-south Crossmax, hopefully towards the end of the year. Having 15-minute frequent service has helped folks on both the east side of Greensboro and the west side of Greensboro. Frequent service gets people to jobs and it connects communities. So we must continue to look at ways to fund another Crossmax in the future, more frequent service for the city.
I, I just want to personally thank you. I am the GTA liaison, and I have seen the movement that you've made on that transit system. We've talked about crosstown routes for the last, I know, 10 years or more before you came, and you just moved it so quickly because it is about getting people from, in a better economic position to get a job, to acquire, to move them up, which I know is important. It's very important. But, and so we are helping to do that. I also love some of the other ideas you have that's gonna get people in other areas. But the crosstown route purple, Crossmax purple, is great. I want us to figure out a way to do the Crossmax orange so that we are getting away from our old hub-and-spoke system of how transit normally operates in, in this area. So I want to appreciate your leadership and let people know that we are looking to do things different in the way of transit. So I want to thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, council member.
Thank you. The item was moved by Mrs. Hightower. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Holston. And that passes nine to zero. That is the end of our printed agenda. Boards and commissions, Mrs. Hightower?
I don't have any to see.
Mr. Holston, Mr. Matheny, Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Bill Furlough to the Minimum Housing Commission to replace Michael McKinney, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes nine to zero. Mrs. Abuzawater?
No, I'm listening. Thank you.
Dr. Wells, Mrs. Thurm, Mrs. Pinder? Okay. Council comments, Mrs. Hightower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to just say Mayor Protem, Abuzawater, and I recognize Cambodian Heritage Week and very honored to do so, to recognize members in our Cambodian community. And they felt really welcomed and appreciated that they were a part of the city of Greensboro and that we embrace them. They've been here for many, many years, but the comment to me was that they feel more now part of the city than ever before. They have a temple out Liberty Road. They are inviting us to their Cambodian New Year on April 13th. I believe it starts at 10:00 in the morning. And so I would encourage residents in the city to go out and get to know your Cambodian neighbors as well. They have a lot of businesses in our community. They don't make a lot of noise, so you may not see or hear from them, but they are here, and they really are appreciative to be part of our city. So I'm really glad that we were able to honor Cambodian Heritage Week. Secondly, I want to say something here. I'm a member of this community too. I'm affected by disinvestment as well. My goal has always been to make the quality of life better for the people that live here. Sometimes you get there, sometimes you don't. It doesn't mean that you have ignored it, you forget about it. But what it means is it's a challenge, and you have to find ways to work through that challenge. So I hear all the comments. I don't disagree with the comments that we have to do better in certain areas, that our community has been underserved. I've been saying it out loud forever, underserved, overlooked, and neglected. Yes, it is. Do we have to be more intentional about making sure we invest in these areas? Absolutely, we do. But it's gonna take all of us together not to pit one side against the other. It is all of us to work through this. I don't know about that report that was brought up tonight. Maybe it was there beforehand. But I do serve on the GHDP board, and I have been there to push issues that sometime have not been pushed in ways that we think are overdue. And I, I don't disagree. No, I don't think to go back and forth when any of the speakers here is appropriate. We need to sit down, put our heads together, and find those ways to make life better for all of us. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, that is the goal. I have a grandchild, and she's only 16 months old. So her future is important to me too, very much so. And I want to make sure I leave this city for her better than which I find it. So I just need to let people know where I am. No, sometime we just sit here to listen because sometime listening is the key. We have to listen. And so I hear you very loud and clear. And I hope that we will find... And I hope that we will find a road that we can all get on together to make things better.
Mr. Holston?
I agree with Councilwoman Hightower's comments, and I'm going to be very brief. Listening is critical. We are going to have to work together. There are some challenges, but we can overcome them and we can thrive. And I look forward to the opportunity. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Matheny?
I agree with my previous council folks and I'll respond to an email that I got late last year that requested being a part of a meeting that I said I could attend via Doodle Poll. And it is about working together. And the person who sent that email to me is here. I hope that maybe you'll change your mind and work with me because the property you mentioned is in the downtown business improvement district. I would welcome the opportunity to sit down with you, talk with you, get to know you, and work with you. It's what I've been asking for for a long time. It'd be nice to do it. Thank you.
Mrs. Hoffman? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think we all agree that we, hope we can all sit down together one day and work through some things and, you know, see what we can do to make things better for everyone. I don't know of anyone up here who doesn't want to do that and hasn't expressed that. I did want to mention, I was unable to call every council member and staff member, but my husband's mother, my mother-in-law passed away last week at the age of one hundred. But she was overseas, so he was unable to go. And just want to thank everyone who I was able to reach out to for the text calls and coming to visit. So I really appreciate that. It's kind of been a rough week, but we're going to get through it. I had the honor of giving greetings at the Senior Games this morning. And the oldest participant is ninety-six years old. And if you haven't watched the Senior Games, look, look online about the Senior Games in Greensboro and you'll really be impressed at all of the things that go on and all of the people who participate. Thank you, Madam Mayor, the state of the city. You know, that was, that was a really good way to let people know all the amazing things we've done. Yes, we've got challenges. I think we all agree there. But, you know, it, it was good to see a lot of things. And I've heard several times that people are really pleased that we are interested in pickleball courts. So that's what I have heard in many places. And, and as I said, we, we know we have challenges. I think everyone up here, we always have challenges that are coming through to us. And I, I do believe that we try. Last, about a week ago, there was Arbor Day at McGirt-Horton Library with the Community Sustainability Council and Department. You know, we know that trees give oxygen and they had a lot of help planting about fifteen trees in the area over across at Peeler and over at the McGirt-Horton Library in that area. And for those who have celebrated the end of Ramadan, Happy Eid. And they have made it through a fasting of almost thirty days. So just wanted to mention those things and, and thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Dr. Wells?
My little talk is a little lengthy tonight. We have some good things happening in District Two. And, and sitting here listening to all the comments tonight. The speakers seem to think we're rich. The speakers think that we don't care about people. People just think that we are different. We don't care about the homeless. And that's not the feeling, not at all. When I used to go to the IRC every Sunday morning. I used to be Chair of the Board for IRC. I care about homeless people. I care about folk that don't have anything to eat. We really don't, and people don't have any place to stay. We have people who are making good salaries and they don't have any place to stay. They can't find a, a house to rent because the rent is too high. So it's not that we don't care, but frankly, we don't have all the answers. We try to find some answers, but we don't have all the answers. Now, I did not know, I was wondering what they were saying about in the park, they couldn't feed, couldn't give food to people. So I asked for the ordinance. I wanted to see what is it, what does this ordinance say? And there's one thing in there that it says, "The park guidelines expressly prohibit charitable distribution activities." So that must be the reason that they couldn't give people food. Now, I don't go along with that one. If folk have a heart to give to somebody, then why can't they give it? I mean, I, but it's from the, the police department. Who's from? Well, we need to talk, Zach, these are your folks? Who, who is it?
Who's the downtown parks?
Downtown, well, we need to talk to the parks people then. I, I, I mean, I can understand you need order and you don't want them messing up the park if they pick up the debris after they finish eating. But, but why say you can't give to them? That doesn't seem right. I, so, well, well, I heard that, so I, I, I want to do something about that. I don't think that's really right. So we don't have heavy, heavy wallets, as someone said, that we go home with heavy wallets and that's all we're concerned about because that's not true. But the good things that are happening in District Two last week, the Triad Adult and Pediatric Medicine opened their administrative building and three of us with, all the masked folk and Councilmember Hugh, Hugh Holston and Councilwoman Hightower were there. And Jamila, that's right, Jamila was there too. So we, we applaud Tappan for bringing that to its own Bishop Otis Lockett Way. That's right off of, of Cone Boulevard.
And they also have their corporate offices over there.
Their corporate office are there. Yeah, yes. And they're, they're going to build another building, so we're happy about that. For a long time, we haven't had in-person meetings for the concerned citizens. So Thursday night will be our first in-person meeting for, since, since the pandemic. So at seven o'clock at Peeler Thursday night, those of you who live in northeast Greensboro, we invite you to the Concerned Citizens Meeting. And then on the fifth, Peeler Center will name a room for Mr. Nicholas Bright, who has been a longtime community supporter and has trained a lot of young people who are now adults and productive citizens in our community. So that's at twelve o'clock on the fifth at Peeler Center. And, um, I give, I'm just kind of, we, 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 um, one of... There, there are those who, in our community, that we've lost some, some folks. I can't call names now, but I'm really touched by some of the folk that, someone that passed in our neighborhood. And I want to say to the people who live in the area of Monica, Vena, and all of it, I know you're concerned. I know, Kristin, you're concerned. Everybody's concerned about their neighborhood. That's how I got here. That's how Sharon got here because we were fighting for something for our neighborhood. But some of the things have not, have not changed, but we're still working. And see, that's what, now Kristin can shake your head, but, well, we have been here. And if you were sitting in the seat, maybe you'd understand a little bit better. But we're trying, we have, we're trying to do things that we hope in the long run will be better, not just for District One, Two, but for the whole of Greensboro because we're all in this together. We really are. When our neighbors are suffering, then we're suffering all over the city. So I just, I just want people to understand that we care about people. And these things that folks say about us is that's their idea, but that's not us. Thank you.
Mrs. Thurm?
Lots of thoughts going on. First, before I forget, I want to mention that April twenty-third unleashed the Triad Conference for Local Businesses that's being sponsored by Triad Local First is having their half-day conference at UNCG. And I encourage those that have small businesses in our community, may want to check that out and dip their toe into Triad Local First. It's a good organization and it really supports local, small local businesses in our community. Adding on to what some of my fellow council people mentioned, just because we aren't talking about a project in person, doesn't mean that we are, you know, live in person, doesn't mean that there aren't some great things in the works coming up that sometimes we can't share. And especially when it comes to supporting and housing our homeless community, there are things in the works that I know I've been working on for quite some time and will continue to work on. And I just want people to know that some of these takes a lot longer than we would like. And because sometimes we're depending on other people and sometimes we aren't able to share all the facts. But we're not ignoring the public and we're not ignoring the demands and the needs that are out there. Contrary to what folks sometimes think. It takes some of these things, I know I've been working on something for six ye, six years that I'm hoping will come to fruition in the next twelve months. I'm relying on other organizations and so it takes time. But that doesn't mean we're not working on it and we're not pushing as hard as we possibly can on these things. I'd also like to mention that we do allow feeding on the grass at MMOB. And that has been established for quite some time and organizations have been made well aware of that. You know, prior to Sunday's feeding issue, that organization was told beforehand, hey, you're welcome to do it at MMOB on the grass. That organization chose not to, to make a point. And they're, you know, they can make that point if they choose to. But I just want the public to know that we're not saying you can't feed people. We're saying here's a place to feed people. And it's making our property, you know, it's on the MMOB property. And so I just wanted to make sure folks knew that that's available, that it's acceptable. If they have questions, they can reach out to Andrea Harrell in the manager's office and she can talk about that and, and talk to you about that and those organizations. Contrary to popular belief, we are not evil people. We are trying and we're trying really hard. And I know you all don't believe that sometimes. And I know it doesn't look like it at sometimes. But like I said, there's a lot going on and some of it has to happen in the background until we can make things public. The other thing I wanted to state is that I had a wonderful meeting with a developer that's new to Greensboro that has heard our citizens and is very interested in developments that involve citizen input. And I shared that with Councilwoman Hightower. It's a very exciting developer new to our area. But they're like, we want to meet with the public, find out what they want for this area, go design it and bring it back and say, here, we heard you and this is our idea. What do you think? And to me, that was a really exciting meeting because that means we are making progress. These are developers with small pieces of property, large pieces of property, you know, five acres and a hundred acres that are coming to our community, have heard the residents of our community as well as what council has said. And I'm very excited about this opportunity and I hope that it works out really well for the residents and for this developer. I think they could be a huge game changer. And I just want folks to know, people are hearing the message about Greensboro and what Greensboro wants and they're starting to react. We can't make them react, but boy, we sure can work with them when they come and say, I'm ready to participate in moving Greensboro forward. And I'm very excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pinder?
What seems to resonate, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you all for taking care of your neighbors. And one of the things that I heard this evening that just continues to resonate is someone said, the young lady said right there, stay, grow, and thrive. In order for us to be able to stay, grow, and thrive, it reminds me of this quote of the fierce urgency of now. And when we think about the fierce urgency of now, in order for us to look at the future that's coming ahead, we have to look at what's happening now and how we can address that. And what I saw in this room this evening was a dedication and commitment from very different sectors and definitely many people to be able to say, we can do this, but the thing is, we can't do this single-handedly. We have to do this together. And one of the things I heard also is that we, how do we do this where we have to be guided by policy? And so how do we look at policies, going back to the ordinances and the things that we have? How do we use those things to amplify, address, and bring awareness and look for sustainable solutions for the future? And one of those things is, I didn't get to say when Sharon mentioned transit, because I used to be part of the Transit Commission, I have to give credit to Mr. Mason and the work that he's done because I was on that commission for about, I think, two, three years. Two or three years. And just to be able to see the impact of the Purple Max and how that's impacted people's quality of life from being able to have access to and from employment, to and from being able to meet the basic needs of, of life, as well as being able to have access to healthcare. So going from thirty to forty-five minutes to get to and from somewhere to fifteen minutes. And so one of the things I like to do is use asset-based of what is working and how do we continue to grow and expound on that? And then look at how do we come up with sustainable plans to address those other things that we're challenging with? So again, I say thank you. I hear you. And really just that stay, grow, and thrive really resonates. And I think all of us can find a place in staying, growing, and thriving. And how do we help make Greensboro healthy for all of the residents of our city? So thank you.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, thanks very much, Mayor. You know, I think it's really important that we are here every month to hear from our citizens and, and to listen. I, I sometimes think that, many times, that, that some people are just not aware of everything that the city has done and the decisions that we've made and the spending decisions that we've made for the citizens of this city regarding, regarding shelter for, for our citizens. I'd like sometimes also for you to consider that Greensboro is, is more than fifty percent of the population of Guilford County. And Guilford County is, is legally responsible, as mandated by the state, for providing health and human services to this population. And as I said, more than fifty percent of that population is here in the city of Greensboro. You know, I hope from time to time that the commissioners hear from all of you who, who come to us as well. I think it, I think that's important. So I, I, I hope that, that, that you're speaking to them and, and if not, that you will consider doing that. I just want to say one other thing too. I don't have the, I haven't looked at the... I don't have the, I haven't looked at the numbers recently, but I certainly know over much of the, many of the years that I've been on council, that, that more of our spent, capital spending has been in several districts or areas of the city as opposed to, to others. And, you know, I'm really, ask for an update, first for me personally, for, for those numbers, just so that I can share them. But the other thing I want to tell you that, this is important to me and I, and I've had several conversations with our city manager, that, that when we look at whether it's sidewalks or other infrastructure in the city or, or needs, that, that we really need to look at it on a needs basis, not, I know that we've, we've gone through periods of times where we try to equalize sometimes our spending, again, whether it's infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, whatever, parks, that we, that we try to equalize it among five districts. And, and I've said, I'm not sure that that's, that's an appropriate way for us to be doing that now, that we probably, that we really need to look at it on a needs basis. And that might be less spending, it might be considerably less spending in my district and I think the citizens of my district would be open to that, as I have indicated to him that certainly I could be. So maybe that's, that's a different, slightly different way for us to begin to look at how we meet some of these long-held needs in parts of our city as opposed to other areas. So I just wanted you to hear that and think about it. So thank you very much. We always need to hear from you and I hope you come, you'll continue to come and talk to us.
Thank you. I, I do want to recognize that Delaney is still here. She led us in the pledge and she has made it through the entire, the entire meeting, so. You, you get extra credit. Anything we can do to help you get that badge, please let us know. I, I want to say, I think this has been a really good discussion. Tomorrow, we do have a homeless task force meeting. It is a group that County Chair Skip Austin put together. High Point and Greensboro are both represented. Sharon has been to the meetings, Zach, I know Hugh's going to be there tomorrow. And it's really a good opportunity for Greensboro and High Point to look at what we can do because homeless is transient. People go back and forth between lines in Guilford County and other counties, but, you know, for the first time in a very long time, we are working with High Point. We're looking at where we can co-locate facilities that will be able to serve more people, to make sure that they're on transit lines. Servant Center is going to open up in the next few months, which really focuses on homeless veterans. In the city of Greensboro, we did $1.5 million towards that project and so did Guilford County. It's really the first time, I think, that there has been a partnership like that going towards homeless services. Through this homeless task force, we are looking at different ways that we can invest and work together as a group. And while the progress has been slow, the progress has been made and I think that's what's really important. You know, the, the city manager has mentioned the road to 10,000 houses. It's not necessarily one type of house. It's housing for people across the board. It is attainable housing. What might be attainable for one person isn't attainable for somebody else. The way that Guilford County is growing is that we need housing at all price points. And as you get people in the price points that they can afford, it actually opens up some downstream housing. I'm excited to hear more about how the city manager is working on this project and I know that you've, you've got a timeline, but it's, it's the first time that I've heard a lot of people in our community be really excited about, about something, that they want to see where, what would they can do, how they can be part of this 10,000 homes. One of the conversations that we had is that we really need to look at, not building codes, because code is code, but what are we doing maybe by ordinance that's making it more expensive to build a home? And I think that that is something that, very important that we need to look at. So that we could be, we've talked about being employer of choice, but maybe we want to be a, an area of choice where developers are coming in, because we are the easiest place to do business. So I think that that is an important part of your 10,000 homes. The Guilford delegation will host their meeting in the council chambers this coming Thursday at 6:00. Unfortunately, it conflicts with the county commissioners' meeting, but I do know that the Guilford delegation Thursday nights, I think, are the best nights for them to be back in town and be able to meet with people. So I hope that people who have expressed concerns today about maybe how funding could be spent, you know, it helps if we can get some funding from the state. I would encourage you to come and speak to the Guilford delegation about things that are very important to you. You know, maybe make sure that the county is financed the way it needs to be financed to take care of these issues so that they can turn around and help us attack some of the housing and homelessness. So I would encourage you to come back Thursday night at 6 o'clock and speak with our, with our Guilford delegation. That's all I have. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor. One, one quick point. There was a lot of discussion regarding the situation about feeding in the park. Large in part, the concern or the scenario is not as much related to the actual feeding in the park, but making sure that the park rules are enforced, which are, are rules for the park that is for the public. But you, the decision we made last year was really about making sure that people who are in this scenario, that may land them in, whether they're homeless or on the verge of being homeless or in need, that we were putting them in the best scenario so that they can navigate to a good place. So I think one of the other councilmembers alluded to it, when, when the decision was made to help the parks enforce the policy that they have in place, we made sure that not only we provided an additional location, which was our own location here outside of our, our facility, but also we partnered with other, other groups, one of them you saw tonight, who made sure that their facility was available for people to provide food services. But I do want to say something that's tremendously important, which is, anytime we do that and we coordinate those locations, we make sure that we provide folks that are on, in that space, that can help people identify resources that they need. That has led to what this council has done in stepping forward to address that need and spending more than a million dollars, additional from the regular things that we've done, but also being very aggressive about making sure that, that our behavioral health team, which we were able to form, and we're grateful that you allowed us to form the GSO Home Team, which we provided some stats a few days ago, and oftentimes I hear comments that we don't care, that you don't care about homeless people. That team has been able to, to identify and place eight different people into housing, which is extremely important. They've also been able to help a, more than 50 people attain either a driver's license or state identification, which I spoke with some professionals who are in the service, service providing world, who indicated that that is the one of most, one of the most essential needs for folks who are experiencing those challenges. So again, I want to make sure that the public hears that if we put a rule in place, it's not just that we're putting a rule in place to restrict someone, but we're always making sure that we help the people that are in need and that you all as council have put up your money and the city's money to make sure that we do that. So thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to also mention the Greater Guilford Food Finder, which is the app where people can look and usually you can find where warm meals are being served just about any day of the week and where there are food pantries. And Yvonne Johnson, who we talked about earlier today, One Step Further, they have one, she started one and, you know, food pantries today really are like mini grocery stores where people can go in and choose the foods that they want to eat, not food that they are necessarily given. And I think it's important that people understand that that resource is available. Yes?
Just wanted to clarify one thing is that Jewish Family Services on Friendly Avenue also has a food pantry and you do not have to be Jewish to take advantage of their food pantry. So just so the public knows, if they see it listed there, that's not a prohibition, that's not, it is a resource for anyone that needs it. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
The Wells Memorial gives, has food twice a month and they feed on Sundays, feed the homeless every Sunday.
Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, no comment.
All right. All in favor, say aye.